Trustee Cheney?
Here.
Trustee Foster?
Here.
Mayor Newhart?
Here.
Trustee Calora?
Here.
Trustee McKnight?
Here.
And Village Attorney Stephen Gava is stuck in traffic.
Okay. May I have a motion to accept the minutes of May 5, 2025?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to accept the following reports, April 2025, the Clerk's Office, Justice Department, Planning Department, Building Department, and Department of Public Works.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to rescind the motion made on May 5, 2025, approving the authorization to pay all approved and audited claims in the amount of $203,447.96.
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to approve the authorization to pay all approved and audited claims for the abstract dated May 5, 2025, in the amount of $204,447.96.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And authorization to pay all approved and audited claims in the amount of $316,343.89.
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And do we have a police report tonight?
Just a brief one, sir. Most of these roads that are affected in the town, we are working closely with the Town VPW and their engineers on some of the newer repair projects that they're going to be doing through the end of August.
Right.
The one that will affect the village will be closure at Paul Road and Brady.
Yeah, Barry and I were just discussing that.
So we're working closely with them and also with the other first responding agencies in the event of these road closures.
Correct.
And we'll update our social media when there's changes.
Any expectation for the additional traffic we're going to see at 17A because people that live in Ridgefield are not going to be able to make the left turn to come into the village on South Street, they're going to have to go out to 17A.
Yeah, there is definitely more traffic.
But it'll be offset by the fact that people coming down Brady can't make that right and won't be able to go out there as well, so.
Correct.
But then that'll dump them all the way down to South Street and Galloway.
Yeah, and then.
To the left there.
Then out to Paul Road that way.
Yeah. According to what I read, four to six weeks was the expectation for the construction and the detour to last.
Yeah, I'm hoping they're kind of under promise, well, over promise.
And under delivered.
That's what we're hoping for. I think last month they discussed the Junior Police Academy, the actual dates having posted. So Session 1 is the July 14 through July 25, and Session 2 will be August 4 through August 15. And again, that's for 10 to 15-year-olds from the three school districts, Warwick, Florida, and Greenwood Lake.
That's great.
I do this reminder pretty much every month with the town, I should start doing it here as well, that we do have a prescription medication collection bin in our lobby available 24 hours a day for any prescription medications, solids, not liquids. We empty that probably every two and a half, three weeks, it fills up, so it's definitely successful. And also, we'll be on hand for the Memorial Day Parade this coming Monday with road closures and detours, officers will be on hand, as well as the pride parade on the Journal.
Great.
Thank you.
Lastly, we are currently conducting interviews with detectives. I hope to promote two of our police officers to detective, and this is also with one pending retirement of one more detective.
Okay, very good.
So I have it this time unless anyone in the board has any questions.
Thank you.
Busy times in the village.
Yes, the weekends have been busy.
To say the least. You don't have to stay for the whole.
Your agenda stays.
Yes, it is. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Hi, Steve. So we have a number of public hearings this evening, and Raina, would you please read the public notice on the first one?
Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Village Board of the Village of Warwick at Village Hall 77 Main Street, Warwick, New York, 10990, on the 19th day of May 2025 at 7:30 PM, or as soon thereafter as the matter can be heard on the petition of Vanessa Mann and M&amp;L Equity Auto LLC for adoption of a local law changing the zoning designation of certain real property identified as Lot 2 in the subdivision of the property located at 42 Orchard Street, Warwick, New York, Tax Map Section 210, Block 11, Lot 5, from residential to light industrial. The Village Board will at the above stated time place, time and place here all persons interested in the subject matter hereof. Persons may appear in person or by agent. All written communications addressed to the Village Board must be received by the Village Board at or prior to the public hearing.
Great, thank you. So we, Board, do you want to say anything, or I'll open it up to the floor? If you'd like to open it to the public, please raise your hand, and when you're called upon, give us your name, and.
Mayor, if I may, I introduce the project?
Of course you may, please.
And I apologize if I turned my back to the wrong group, but you've seen this.
We have seen this, we recognize it, yeah.
And for the benefit of the public, my name's Bach Karulik, I'm the attorney for the Warwick Car Wash. This application involves the southernmost portion of what most of us would consider the car wash property, but in reality, it is the rear of Vanessa Mann's house. For the last 30 or 40 years, the car wash has enjoyed a lease agreement with Miss Mann to allow vehicular traffic to make its way around the rear of the tire center so it can enter the lineup to go into the car wash. One technical problem during all this time is that this property in the green is zoned for residential use. So technically, cars going around the back of the building for commercial purposes is a violation of the zoning code. About three years ago, the building inspector brought this to my client's attention and said, listen, we'd like to clean the situation up, we'd like you to seek a zone change so that the commercial use of that parking lot is permitted. The application involves no expansion, no additional pavement. If anything, it will require the installation of a tree line along the southernmost portion of the property, and the continuation of a fence line between Miss Mann's house. We started this application by first going to the Zoning Board of Appeals, then the Planning Board, and now we're before the Village Board seeking the zone change. The zone change would change the use from residential to light industrial, but again, we propose no new use, no expansion, it's simply to permit the continuation of traffic as it presently exists around the south end of the property. And I think that more or less sums up what the applicant is intending to do here, and I thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So with that information, if anybody would like to.
I have a question, just maybe you could help.
Bach, Donna Haley?
Yeah. Where is the traffic path?
Have you been to the car wash?
I have been to the car wash.
Okay, so as you go past the gas pumps?
Yeah.
You continue around what I'll call the tire center. It used to be the self-service car wash building.
Okay, so your, cars are entering from Elm Street?
Elm Street, Elm Street is way over here.
Okay, yeah, that's the entrance.
All right, so you come in here, and then you bear to the left to get to the gas pumps. The current flow of traffic continues past the self-serve station, which is now the tire center, and around the back of the building.
And that, that's what your green area is?
That's right.
Is there entrance or egress from that green area?
No, there's not.
Okay.
Yes.
Zion Duke, will you be putting any new lights up?
No, there'll be no physical changes to the property whatsoever, other than the installation of the tree line for screening and the fence behind Miss Mann's property.
One more question. Where do we address our further issues that come up and that have been already addressed but haven't been resolved?
I'd be more than happy to convey those to the owner, I'm not sure, in relation to this application or other issues involving the car wash operation.
Well, that is a separate proposal from, or issue from the other things that are.
Well, Mr. Laduke, the owner of the car wash is here tonight, I think he's a nice guy, I'm sure he'd be happy to meet with you and discuss any outstanding issues.
Sounds good, and I can.
I'm unfamiliar with what you're talking about, so I wish I could answer your question better, but.
Okay, well, I'm sure you've heard from our neighborhood, and I'd just like to know where we could further go, if there is, like I said, unresolved issues, I'd like to know where we should address that for them to be resolved before you expand or.
There's no expansion being proposed here whatsoever. The physical conditions of the property will be exactly the same as they exist today.
Like, they differ, is a change, and is an expansion of the light industrial zone?
It is a change in the description of the property, but the use as far as what's happening on that piece of property isn't going to change, it's simply traffic is being routed around the rear of the building.
We've addressed the car wash owner, and I'd like to know where we should further address these issues, we've addressed the many avenues, I'd just like to know the proper way to, like I said, I don't want to freak you myself, again, I'd just like to know.
If they, excuse me, Zion, you can obviously go to the Building Department and Planning Code Enforcement.
Yeah.
If there are code enforcement issues, then we can deal with them directly.
Sure.
And, you know, basically, if you, our code is online.
Yeah.
Are there concerns related to the change in light industrial?
Not the proposal that's being addressed right now, so I just, you know, I didn't want to tie up your minutes.
But I.
I could go through that.
Okay.
And I, I just, I just thought maybe there'd be anything else, because, yeah, because there has been unresolved issues.
Well, I'd appreciate.
Or issues that are, you know, that people are concerned about, and just to have the communication is good, and you're, that is a great, yeah, we can talk directly to the, that's always the best way to talk directly.
Is it concerns with, like, traffic, or noise, or lighting?
Um, well, I know there's.
Might extend into this area?
I mean, I, I know there's a few things, and they might have already been resolved, so, you know, I didn't want to really bring them up, knowing little of that, so. I do know there is lighting issues that have been brought up, and personally, they shine in every single window, even on the opposite side of the house, because they reflect, and, and, yeah, so I was just wondering if there was going to be any additional lighting.
Not as part of this application, no additional physical improvements will be made to the property whatsoever, other than the trees for screening and the one fence along Miss Mann's backyard.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, any more questions?
Not for you.
Okay.
Dan Mack, in the materials that were made available, there was some, there was a memo from the Planning Board attorney that raised some issues about this. Is that, you know what I'm talking about? They're all, it should be in the minutes.
I think I can answer that.
Sure.
So in the environmental questionnaire, we had incorrectly checked a few wrong boxes on the form. For example, is it in the floodplain?
Okay, yeah.
It said no, but the answer is yes.
Yeah.
So those were some technical corrections, not necessarily affirmative problems that had been identified.
Okay.
Okay. And Bob, that form also said any impact to land, yes, but then there was nothing beneath it, so maybe that, was that another?
Well, at first I had checked no, because we're not making any physical changes to the property.
Right.
And I checked no in a couple boxes because we're making no changes to the property, but.
That's what I, that's what I thought, yeah.
His interpretation was, well, this box should be checked yes, so we have no problem checking yes.
Yeah, so I just had a couple questions, I know it's public comments, I want to make sure you all get yours in. Go for it, go after me. So, one question I had was that, first of all, I, I've been there, I understand the road is already there, it goes around, and I do like the idea of making it, making it right, so that's in compliance, right? One question I had is that it keeps referring to Lot 2. It was my impression it would be subdivided, but after the fact. The one, you know, just in terms of getting this absolutely right, it seems like the, it seems like, right now, we're talking about changing for 42 Orchard, the entire property as a zoning change, when in reality, it's supposed to just apply to Zone 2. And I know I've seen in the, I've seen in the application everything that you are calling out Zone 2, but I don't think Zone 2 exists yet.
So Lot 2 has already been approved by the Planning Board, but their approval was conditioned on the zone change, so it's the cart and the horse argument here. So the path we've taken is get the lot line change approved first.
Right.
Then we need approval of this board to change the zoning classification, and then the last piece of the puzzle, and Miss Mann is right here, is we have a contract to buy that lot, Lot 2, and once that happens, Lot 2 will become part of the car wash.
Makes sense, and one of the things we brought up before was the idea of, can we put some kind of conditional language that applies to what is 2B Lot 2? Because I realized we have to give the approval first, and then it goes back to the official for Lot 2, because I don't think it's, it's stated like that in the, in the resolution.
You don't have to create Lot 2 to change the zoning of it. You can change portion of zoning on land, in fact, it's, I won't say common, but it happens from time to time that a boundary line for two different zoning districts runs through a single property. So as long as you're properly designating the area that the zoning change is going to apply from, it doesn't matter if the lot's created yet or not.
Okay, so there was a, there was a description with boundaries, well, within 42, there was a description with the boundaries of that, what is 2B Lot 2. So I'd be more comfortable if that, if that is referenced, and I'm looking through the 130 pages, what page are you on?
Lot 2 in the subdivision.
That's just the public hearing, so I'm wondering about the actual. Anyone have the page?
It's on the tax map section 210, Block 11, Lot 5, do you want to use that description?
No, I mean the actual local law, how it's written. I don't think anyone has access to that.
Are you looking, can I say one more thing?
Please, sorry.
Is, is the front lot, the lot on Orchard Street, going to stay residential?
That's what we're getting, that's what we're trying to get after.
Yeah, the language is what.
Yeah, what it says, if I could, the zoning designation, a portion of certain real property located at 42 Orchard Street, identified on the village tax map as, et cetera, and more particularly identified as Lot 2 on the subdivision flat entitled M&amp;L Equity Auto Site Plan, et cetera, et cetera, is prepared by Brian Friedler, engineering dated June 26, and last revised, et cetera, et cetera, and specifically described on Schedule A attached here too, is hereby changed from R to LI, and there's the description.
So that's, so that's, that's going to be part of the local law?
Well, the local law changes your zoning map, it's not actually going to be in the code or anything like that. So what this does is, when your zoning map is drawn up next, this particular section will be drawn as LI, and I would think by that time, they'll have consolidated the section that's being subdivided off with the existing car wash lot, and you can just draw it up that way through the tax law.
I to, I totally get that, the idea is there are records to keep between now and then, and we're referring to Lot 2 that doesn't exist.
You don't have to have an existing Lot 2, you can change a portion of land as long as it's reasonably described, you have a map describing it, and that's in a meets and bounds description of it right here.
So does, that was the question, does it get filed together?
Yeah, the law does.
That's what I was asking.
But it isn't codified, is all I was saying, it doesn't go into your code, it should just be adopted in the clerk's office.
One more question here.
Thank you, Ray.
I think I remember in the, in the Dickover comments on this, that he's, he was concerned that the residential lot was going to end up too small, that you really can't cut off that much of a, of a lot and still have it according to code. Does that ring a bell with anybody?
Mr. Karulik, do you have an answer?
Yes, so the minimum lot size requirement is one of the variances we obtained from the Zoning Board of Appeals, but if you look at the remaining lot in comparison to every other lot on Orchard Street, it's the same size, if not larger.
Okay.
Because this process has been continuing, right? Has this?
Well, we already have the ZBA approval, so that's done, and addressing Mr. McKnight's concern, Lot 2 exists, the Planning Board already approved it, the chairman signed the map, we just haven't filed the map because the approval was conditioned on this board's approval of the zone change. If that lot exists and is approved by the Planning Board, we're just going to file the map as soon as this board takes action.
So it's been documented enough in enough boards that it's not going to be misconstrued that the entire lot is light industrial?
I can't change it at this point.
Right.
Lot 2 exists, was approved by the Planning Board, it's on the map I showed you, Lot 2 is the green section, it says it right on the map, that's the map that the chairman of the board approved, but their approval was conditioned on an approval here, so I can't move that forward until I get a y from this board.
So you could make sure, you could underline, Tom, you could underline that, and it is part of your approval?
And you have the whole meets and bounds description to the inch there, it can't get more detailed than that.
That is, is true.
Just want to make a small correction, I'm not sure if it's the same size as every lot on Orchard.
Pretty darn close. I've got the map here, if anybody would like to take a look, we show all the lots on each Orchard Street.
Board, any comments, more comments? I don't think so, yeah.
We're just curious, I guess, I mean, it's not material to the situation that we have now, but, you know, how this all unfolded, I mean, there's all.
I can speak through that.
The history of it, like how, how this development occurred across a property that was not theirs, and it's very close to.
For the last 30 or 40 years, and before Mr. Laduke acquired the property, prior owners have entered into lease agreements with the owner of Miss Mann's property, including Miss Mann today, and annual fees were paid to the owner of that lot for the right to send traffic around behind the building. And that's been the way it's been for, I don't have the lease right in front of you, at least 30 or 40 years, if not longer. I'm going to surmise that the lease agreement formalized a practice that was happening even before that, but that is before my time. In any event, building inspector knocked on Mr. Laduke's door and said, you know, we got this little issue behind your building, I'd like to see you clean it up. Someday, Mr. Laduke hopes to retire, sell the property, and he doesn't want to have a small issue like this, be the issue that bites him in the ass and kills the deal. So he's spending a lot of money to do this right, to buy Mrs. Mann's property outright rather than leasing it from her, and at the same time, to seek a change in the zoning classification so that our i's are dotted, our t's are crossed, and everything is legal.
Thank you.
She's only selling Lot 2, the vacant lot in the back, that's used for traffic flow right now, she's not selling her house. Well, at least not today, and not to Mr. Laduke.
Is all the other, Donna Haley, is all the other property on Orchard Street owned by the car wash along the way there to Miss Mann's property?
Not all of them, there are a few of them.
How many?
Three or four, yeah.
Four.
Yeah.
Yeah, four.
Now, as far as concerns over the use of that property, all of that is still zone residential, so he can't turn that into more space for the car wash.
Zion Duke, the storage is not prohibited, but not prohibited, right, because that's acceptable to store business items in a residential thing, that's okay, all right?
Well, now for commercial purposes.
Okay.
He couldn't start charging to park cars on residential properties, that would be a commercial parking lot.
Okay, yes.
Mayor Dick, just curious, I mean, this probably has nothing to do with the issue today, but since Fire Wash owns quite a few of those properties, what's, what's the, like, the future, can he sell, can he change those into his own, they're his own property already, can he expand the car wash on those properties if he?
No, because they're zoned differently, they're zone residential, he would have to go through hoops, hoops.
The same zoning change process.
And I can say, I'm sure that this board would be behind me to say that we do not want to lose a neighborhood like Orchard Street.
Well, that's my concern, I just feel like the business areas encroaching more and more and more on the neighborhoods, and, you know, we have yesterday's down in there, and now the car wash issue, and I just feel like it's getting to my property closer and closer.
Understood. Yes, I.
I just wanted to bring up how much we enjoy having the car wash there as neighbors and the business, it's always clean, well-kept, the workers are happy, and it's great to hear about the trees.
Good. Any other comments or questions? Okay, Board, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming, I appreciate it, you can stick around if you want, got a long meeting, but it's all fun. So the next public hearing. And Raina, would you please read the public notice on that?
Sure. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Village Board of the Village of Warwick at Village Hall 77 Main Street, Warwick, New York, 10990, on the 19th day of May 2025 at 7:30 PM or as soon thereafter as the matter can be heard, on a proposed local law entitled "A Local Law Amending Village of Warwick Village Code, Chapter 169, Flood Damage Prevention, to repeal and reenact subsection 4.1 entitled Designation of the Local Administrator." A copy of the proposed local law is on file in the office of the village clerk and available for inspection by interested persons during village clerk's business hours. The proposed local law has also been posted on the village's website, www.villageofwarwick.org. The Village Board will at the above stated date, time, and place here all persons interested in the subject matter hereof. Persons may appear in person or by agent. All written communications addressed to the Village Board must be received by the Village Board at or prior to the public hearing.
Very good, thank you, Raina.
You're welcome.
Board, since we have no public hearing, any comments? This was.
Well, I mean, maybe just to give a little information.
Sure.
Behind it, right now, the floodplain administrator for the village is the planning board.
That's correct.
And what this would do is move that responsibility to the building inspector code enforcement officer. It's still going to require the involvement of the village engineer to give guidance on these matters, on a particular application, so, and the planning board's probably going to be involved anyway, but in order to just process the paperwork relative to flood prevention, it's going to be in the hands of the, the building department.
Very good.
Which is a good thing.
Yes, it is. Any other comments? May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next public hearing.
Okay, here we go. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Village Board of the Village of Warwick at Village Hall 77 Main Street, Warwick, New York, 10990, on the 19th day of May 2025 at 7:30 PM or as soon thereafter as the matter can be heard, on our proposed local law entitled. matter can be heard on a proposed local law entitled "A Local Law Amending Village of Warwick Village Code Chapter 145: Zoning to repeal and reenact subsection 145-152L regarding the duration of variances." A copy of the proposed local law is on file in the office of the village clerk and available for inspection by interested persons during village clerk's business hours. The proposed local law has also been posted on the village's website, villageofwarwick.org. The village board will at the above-stated date, time, and place hear all persons interested in the subject matter hereof. Persons may appear in person or by agent. All written communications addressed to the village board must be received by the village board at or prior to the public hearing.
Do you want to illuminate that? Barry?
Basically, we're putting a restriction on zoning board of appeals decisions, and it requires that the recipient of that decision has to enact it within 180 days by obtaining either a building permit or occupancy permit for the property.
Okay. Steve, chime in.
It is a restriction. You're absolutely right. But right now, it's more restrictive in your code as far as the number of days to get your approvals. So what happens is somebody goes and gets a variance, and they can't get their building permits, and they expire, and then they have to go back and renew their variance. It's a waste of their lease time because once the board's decided you're entitled to a variance, unless there's been a real change in circumstances, they pretty much have to give it to them again. So what this says is you have 180 days from the time you get your variance, but if you have to go to the planning board and get planning board approval, 180 days runs from the planning board's approval, not from the variance approval.
Or ours.
Or in the event that it was the town board, oh, village board, pardon me, absolutely. And in addition to that, you can go back to the zoning board and get a 90-day extension of time if you need to, so that you can, in the event that you're missing some approval or a condition that you can't satisfy, you can maintain your variance without it expiring and move forward. So this kind of streamlines things. Yes, these are limitations, but the reason this law is being enacted is to make it easier to get your billing permits and go forward with your construction, not having to go back to the ZBA over and over again to get renewal of your variance.
Great.
And just to look at the whole process, once you get a building permit, you've got one year to start, and you've got two years to complete. And there is an opportunity for an extension to that, but it doesn't necessarily require anything to be done within that 180 days, except getting the permit or a CO.
Very good. And thank you, Steve, for...
Well, you obviously riled up the crowd.
Again.
I don't know, Raina, how many are watching it?
I, my screen went dark. I don't know.
So, any other comments? May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the final public hearing?
Okay, this is a long one. All right, please take notice that on Monday, May 19, 2025, at 7:30 p.m. or as soon thereafter as the matter can be heard, a public hearing will be held before the board of trustees of the village of Warwick, New York, at Village Hall located at 77 Main Street, Warwick, New York. The village of Warwick will hold a public hearing so that the public may offer comments and suggestions regarding projects to be considered by the village of Warwick for application of $75,000 up to $175,000 for public infrastructure, public improvements, public facilities, or other eligible activities to the Orange County Office of Community Developments to be considered for inclusion in the county's 2026 Action Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to be funded by the 2026 Community Development Block Grant. The action plan functions as a planning document, an application for federal funds, and a strategy to be followed in administering HUD programs. The 2026 county's annual action plan will be prepared and submitted to HUD on or before November 15, 2025, or upon such date as instructed by HUD. The purpose of the public hearing is to obtain the views of residents of the municipality, public agencies, and other interested parties on housing and community development needs to suggest projects to address such needs and affirmatively further fair housing. There will be a discussion of community development needs within the village of Warwick, proposed projects, and a review of any previous projects funded with CDPG. Organizations representing people with low and moderate incomes and people with low to moderate incomes are encouraged to attend this hearing so that their views can be heard as the CDPG program benefits people with low to moderate income. The village of Warwick will make reasonable accommodation and services necessary for citizens with sensory impairments and disabilities at the public hearing. Translation services may be offered upon request and availability. People requiring such accommodations or services should contact the village of Warwick at least three working days in advance at the meeting. People requiring information in alternative format should contact the village of Warwick at 845-986-2031. La información será proporcionada en español apetición.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I probably mispronounced it, but I really did try.
Sounded great to me.
Forget the test.
Good try. Okay, so what is important is that we actually name a project. And so I reached out to, there were three projects that I thought had possibilities. There were sidewalk projects, handicap accessibility. And I gave them to Jane Samuelson, our engineer, to take a look at and just, you know, to weigh them. And so I'll just read what she wrote to us. I took a look at the three possible CDPG projects for this year's application. One was Church Street, across the street. I believe that Church Street sidewalks would be the most impactful project. I think community development would look favorably upon this project since it is within a low to mod income area, and it will provide direct access to Village Hall. The only drawback to this project is that we would need a New York State DOT approval at the Main Street intersection, which that's not that big of a deal, I don't think, considering the amount of work that's going to be done. The next project was the Park Avenue sidewalk, and she comments, "The Park Avenue sidewalk is a very close second choice. However, to reach the minimum of $75,000 grant amount, we may also need to install a sidewalk along Bird Street as well." And I don't understand this next sentence. This project is also within a low to mod income area. And with the new sidewalk on Bird Street, it would provide direct access to Stanley Demming Park from the Park Avenue Elementary School. The low mod part, I'm not so sure about their single-family homes and their, you know, you know, their...
It is a pathway currently for residents of Park Lane apartments to take their kids to school.
And also...
Library, and to go to the library.
And also, it would be a way for the seniors to either Creekside or...
Into the village.
To come into the village.
There's no sidewalk there now.
Well, the sidewalk on the west side of Park Ave...
Right, on the park side.
On the school side?
Yep.
Park Ave from Bird Street to Parkway. That sidewalk in certain sections is in pretty bad shape.
So they said Bird Street. What part of Bird Street did Jane mention?
Be from, I believe, from west, I mean, from Forester to Park Ave.
Far, along the school there, it's fine. I'm not sure. I think she means to get Bird Street from Park Ave around to, or to Park Place.
I, you know what? Yeah, because there's no sidewalk there right now. And actually, I mean, we've almost been hit several times when people come, like, rolling around the side. So maybe that's where she's talking about.
The only, the only thing is that CDPG will not fund...
New sidewalks?
New sidewalks, where there's no sidewalks. We have countered that before. But there will be potentially a walking path along that area, the upper part of Stanley Demming Park, so that would help the safety factor.
Along Bird Street as well?
We could extend it. It's not our, we would have to get an agreement with the school, but I'm sure they would.
So there's a, there's a, there's a sidewalk now from the corner of Burton Park over to Forester. I think when you said various, that's pretty good shape, it seems like.
It is, yeah.
So that's, that's probably not what you're going to...
Yeah, the school.
So we can't apply for something where there's no sidewalk, just existing. So, okay, so maybe that area is...
Did she mention, or did she include in her assessment of that, the sidewalk along Parkway? Because some of that's brand new, but some of it's also in deteriorating condition.
I think she did. I asked her to look at that. And then...
Kind of surprised that the cost is less than Church Street.
Yeah.
Less than the $75,000 even.
What about, has there been any review of, oh my gosh, what is it called? It's Forester Bumps into it.
Colonial Forester.
Colonial, yeah. Any review of Colonial? Because those sidewalks are abominable.
Yeah.
And that's pretty, that would be pretty dangerous to walk along. It doesn't go to...
Doesn't lead to any, I mean, leads into the village.
It leads into the village, yeah.
So, while you're thinking of that, Carly, the other thing is, that stretch of Parkway between South Street and Park Lane, where it's just, it's asphalt and it's breaking, I mean, that's, that's a mess, right? And that, that connects Park Lane and, you know, everyone coming down Parkway to South Street.
So you're talking about, oh, I know, right across from the park.
Between Park Lane and South.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, there's a section of it that's maybe eight foot long or 10 foot long that's just...
Decayed, yeah.
Decayed, deteriorated asphalt and...
Yeah. I mean, that whole strip is kind of a mess.
Well, let me just finish. Although, that's okay. I just want to get all, everything on the, on the plate. Although the sidewalk on the north, so West Street was the other option, and we've spoken about that in the past. Although the sidewalk on the north side of West Street from North Street, actually from Wheeler to North, is fairly uneven too. So from, so from West Street from North Street to House Street definitely needs to be replaced. I'm afraid it would be a hard sell to community development since it is not within a low to mod income area, nor does it provide direct access to any public buildings or park.
I don't know that that's entirely true, because that connects, that enables connection to UME through North Street.
Right.
So through the church, to the church there. And then this connects that part of the community to downtown.
Right.
The school is too far to consider? It's not...
Well, I did mention to her about, you know, is the route that will eventually hopefully be realized between us and the school campuses.
But there are sidewalks on both sides of West Street.
Only up to a point, though.
In the, in the area we're considering, it exists.
From North Street.
Both sides.
Probably.
At least from Division all the way in on the south side, there's sidewalks. Did she have any backup in terms of cost or just pretty general?
General, pretty general. She didn't have much time to really do this.
Right. I'm just wondering, to Tom's point, whether she went as far as going to that stretch of asphalt sidewalk that exists between Park Lane and South Street. Because if you added that in, it, I can't imagine it wouldn't exceed the $75,000.
When does your application have to be? All right. Well, you got to your first June meeting to decide then, basically.
Yeah, we can get more. We can, we actually, what I'll do...
But we could call it the 2025 sidewalk improvement project.
Generally.
ADA, yeah. Accessibility.
Raina, I mean, you...
I don't, I mean...
That's what I was thinking too, Carly, but...
I don't know. I think Jane would be the better person to ask.
Okay.
Because the resolution's required in the language that it's set on the agenda.
Sure.
You know, by the CDPG application, so I don't, I don't know the ins and outs of how particular it has to be.
I'll reach out to her, but I think what I'll do is I'll invite Jane and Keith here, and we'll walk the three projects' areas and really take a hard look.
My point was, you can close the public hearing tonight. You don't have to adopt the resolution. You can put that off until your June meeting.
Understood.
And square away on what you wanted to say.
Very good. Okay. So can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then, under discussions, the village of Warwick employee holidays would be, that we're talking, we're really talking about the handbook. We're not talking about the union contract. So we do have on the agenda a motion for Juneteenth, which is a federal holiday.
Considering this has potential implications for the collective bargaining agreement, should we be doing this in executive session?
That's...
If you don't have it already in your collective bargaining agreement, yes, absolutely. Most of them do. You don't have it in your collective bargaining agreement?
Have what?
Juneteenth.
No?
Well, then it's probably not something you want to talk about out here.
So can I have a motion to go into executive?
Look, why don't we just save it? We've got some other things for executive session.
Okay, we have a...
So why don't we just save it?
Very good, okay. But we do have a motion.
We can just move it, table it into executive session.
Okay. Okay, public comment. Don't everybody yell. We'll move to motions. And trustee Chaney?
Number one, resolution supporting and concurring in the application of the village of Warwick through the Orange County Open Space Protection Program to purchase property located in the village of Warwick watershed. Whereas in 2024, the Orange County Legislature appropriated $1 million to the Orange County Open Space Fund to preserve and protect valuable open space throughout the county. Let me go back and redo that. Whereas in 2025, 2024, the Orange County Legislature appropriated $4 million to the Orange County Open Space Fund to preserve and protect valuable open space and natural resources throughout the county. Whereas the Orange County Open Space Fund provides matching grants to villages, towns, cities, qualified not-for-profits, and individual property owners for the purchase of land, development rights, or conservation easements that meet the objectives set forth in the Orange County Open Space Plan. Whereas the village has received a water quality improvement program grant for watershed acquisition from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation in the amount of $288,150, and three property owners have expressed an interest to convey, and the village, sorry, that should be four property owners, four property owners have expressed an interest to convey, and the village of Warwick wishes to purchase or obtain a conservation easement over the properties. The land located on Cascade Road in the town of Warwick and listed on the tax map is SBL 64-1-6, 64-1-7, 64-1-8, and 64-1-43. Whereas the village of Warwick intends to apply to the Orange County Open Space Fund for matching support in the amount of $96,050 to purchaser obtain conservation easements over the proposed properties. Now therefore, be it resolved that the village board of the village of Warwick and its capacity as governing body of the village does hereby support and concur in the application by the village of Warwick for funding to purchase or... does hereby support and concur in the application by the Village of Warwick for funding to purchase or secure a conservation easement from property owners over his or her lands located on Cascade Road in the town of Warwick and listed on the tax map as SBL sixty-four dash one dash six, sixty-four dash one dash seven, sixty-four dash one dash eight, and sixty-four dash one dash forty-three.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Trustee Cheney?
Yes.
Trustee Foster?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight?
Yes.
Trustee Calora?
Yes.
Mayor Newhart?
Yes.
Number two, motion to rescind the motion made on March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five to accept the proposal from Rafa Systems LLC for the purchase of Starlink Devices, including activation and subscription and a one-year service agreement maintenance plan at a cost not to exceed fourteen thousand, forty-five dollars. Want a little explanation for this and the next one? So, um, we approved this back in March. Um, at that time, we've been having problems with the system making the notification by text and calls to, um, our, uh, contract operator. And so we needed to resolve it. They've, this occurred over the course of a number of months. They came up with, uh, Starlink as the answer to all our problems. And, um, after, probably within a week after March seventeenth, they were notified by Starlink that there were going to be significant increases to the subscription costs for Starlink. And, um, they had been also looking at other options and had been testing them. And so the next motion is going to be what the preferable answer or, or what their recommendation is as to how to deal with it. Uh, we have had two of those units installed in Warwick, have been using them for probably about six weeks now. They're working great. The notifications are going out in a very timely fashion. They're being received in a timely fashion. And, and so, um, it makes sense to, to make this change.
Okay.
So we can do the first motion and then I'll do the next.
Okay, very good. Um, so.
Second.
We have a second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept the proposal from Rafa Systems LLC for the purchase of eleven Phoenix Easy Sell Kits, including activation and subscription and a one-year service agreement slash maintenance plan at a cost not to exceed fourteen thousand, forty-five dollars. Funds are appropriated in budget codes G eight-one-two-zero dash forty-five hundred and F eight-three-two-zero forty-five fifty.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept the proposal for engineering services from Barton and La Judas dated May ninth, twenty twenty-five for additional grant administration services for the Village Watershed Land Acquisition WQIP Round Sixteen Grant, Contract Number C zero-one-one-six-three GG, and authorize the mayor to sign the amendment to the master services agreement with Barton and La Judas for a not-to-exceed amount of four thousand dollars. And just as a.
Second.
Oh, sorry. As a brief matter of, of explanation, um, we got this grant back in twenty twenty-two. We started working on it. Barton and Judas, you know, worked on securing services from appraisers and surveyors. And we were contacted by another property owner up there who said, you know, please consider our property as well. There are only three in the first one. The grant contract never went through early on. And so they came back and they said, we, we, we gotta have a contract. Can't really be doing much of anything until we have a contract. And, um, so we embarked on getting the change to the fourth property and also, um, actually getting the contract in place, which I believe it is now. I asked for confirmation from Barton and La Judas. I haven't received that. Raina, are you?
I think Sadie did.
Sadie did, so, and, and that, that was the doc you signed that the mayor and I did.
I believe so. There was two at the same time, but I believe so. Sadie confirmed it.
Yeah. So, so we're well on our way to moving forward. Um, you know, there was some, there are quite a bit of additional effort for this whole contract thing to, for Barton and La Judas to, to work their way through that. And, uh, um, also, uh, you know, some time has been spent already in preparing the RFP. That's gonna have to, those two RFPs are gonna have to go out again. Uh, so there's gonna be a little bit of additional cost there.
Okay. So we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to hire Jack Maxey to the position of seasonal Department of Public Works Labor at forty hours per week for sixteen weeks with a start date to be determined per the recommendation of DPW Supervisor Michael Moser. Salary will be based on the FY twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six budgets.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to hire Cameron Kellen to the position of Village of Warwick Engineering Intern at thirty-two and a half hours per week for approximately twelve weeks with a start date of May twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. The rate of pay will be in accordance with fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five and fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Second.
And this is primarily to deal with the lead service line, uh, inventory, house-to-house inventory that, uh, uh, the two engineering interns will be focusing most of their effort on this, uh, summer.
Yep. Um, so we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept the bid from Slack Chemical for the delivery of PACL sodium hydroxide caustic beads, sodium hydroxide liquid caustic twenty-five percent, sodium permanganate liquid twenty percent, and citric acid liquid fifty percent. As per the recommendation of HTO Innovation Senior Area Manager Michael Herbert, the contract period will be June first, twenty twenty-five to May thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to accept the quote from Clean Waters Inc. for the delivery of Charge Pack Two Eighty-Two Polymer Liquid. As per the recommendation of HTO, H two O Innovation Senior Area Manager Michael Herbert, the contract period will be June one, twenty twenty-five to May thirty-one, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept the bid from Amrex Chemical Company for the delivery of sodium hypochlorite liquid twelve and a half percent and sodium bisulfite thirty-eight percent as per the recommendation of H two O Innovation Senior Area Manager Michael Herbert. Contract price will be June first, twenty twenty-five to May thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
Second.
Uh, just, um, this is, these were the two items that, um, came in high when the initial bids were received and we went out to, to bid for them. So they, um, they came in. This time we got bids from, I think, three vendors.
Yeah.
And, uh, they were very much in line with last year. Or what we're paying this year, I should say.
Correct. Okay. We, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to accept the bid from Coin Chemical for the delivery of blended orthophosphate and potassium permanganate as per the recommendation of H two O Innovation Senior Area Manager Michael Herbert. Contract period will be June first, twenty twenty-five to May thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Trustee Foster.
Resolution to fund the Village of Warwick Veterans Memorial Park Master Plan Patriots Path and Related Improvements Project. Whereas the Village Board of the Village of Warwick has undertaken and approved a project for the Village of Warwick Veterans Memorial Park Master Plan Patriots Path and Related Improvements Project. And whereas the estimated cost of the said project is seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. And whereas the Village Board of the, of Warwick, Village Board of the Village of Warwick proposes to pay for the said project with local hu- community assistance program grant funds to the extent of seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. Now therefore be it resolved as follows. That the Village Board approves afore said expenditure from funds from the said sources of the Village of Warwick Veterans Memorial Park Master Plan Patriots Path and Related Improvements Project. And that the Village Mayor is authorized to sign all, sign all documents necessary to carry the items thereof.
Second.
Okay. And it's a roll call vote?
Trustee Cheney?
Yes.
Trustee Foster?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight?
Yes.
Trustee Calora?
Yes.
Mayor Newhart?
Yes.
Fiscal year twenty twenty-six, Orange Urban County Consortium Community Development Program Governing Body authorized.
Are we gonna table this?
We're gonna table this, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So there should be a motion to table the second.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to, I, I was gonna name it. Forgot that we changed our minds. Um, motion to table the motion.
Second.
Well, we're just discussing, so we have until what date again? June?
Fifteenth.
It's actually due June twentieth. I looked it up after.
Okay, so we do have enough time?
Just one more meeting.
Yeah.
And that's enough to get submitted and everything?
Well, we have to submit it then.
It's just the resolution.
It's just a resolution.
Yeah. We just have to include the resolution.
But it will give us time to do more specific.
Project, yeah, okay.
Thank you. Scooping, thank you. So we have a second. Uh, no, um, we have the motion. So all in favor?
Did we, did we get seconded?
Mary.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, hi.
I did it quietly.
Okay.
I heard you.
I was, um, cloud nine or something. A motion to authorize the destruction of seventy-two boxes of records as detailed in the attached listing of records eligible for destruction created by Gallego Information Services in accordance with the New York State Records Retention and Disposition Schedule, LGS dash one, and as part of the awarded twenty twenty-four Local Government Records Management Improvement Fund Records Inventory Project. The approximate cost of destruction by New York State ID Preferred Source Vendor Pro Shred VRC Companies LLC will be four hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty-five cents. Funds are appropriated in fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, budget code A one-four-one-zero dash four-nine-five-zero, and will be reimbursed through the LGRMIF Grant Award.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to authorize the destruction of thirty-three boxes of records as listed in the attached listing of records eligible for discre- destruction in accordance with the New York State Records Retention and Disposition Schedule, LGS dash one as part of the Village of Warwick Records Management Plan. The app, approximate cost of destruction by New York State ID Preferred Source Vendor Pro Shred VRC Companies LLC will be one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. Funds are appropriated in fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty-five, budget code A one-four-one-zero dash four-nine-five-zero.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to increase the hourly rates for the Village of Warwick Recreation Program Directors and Health Directors to twenty dollars per hour and Assistant Program Directors to fifteen dollars per hour for fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty-six.
Okay.
Second.
And we had some conversation about this, but we reduced it. The original request, of course, was across-the-board increases. And in this case, it's just, uh, the directors and assistant directors.
And Sadie did come back and say that she felt like it could fit in the budget.
Yes, she did, yes. So we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to grant permission to close Park Avenue between Galloway Road and Burt Street on Thursday, May twenty-two, twenty twenty-five from four PM to seven PM for the benefit of the Park Avenue Elementary Warrior Course Event.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to grant permission to Park Avenue Elementary School to hold a kindergarten class picnic in Stanley Deming Park on Thursday, June twelfth, twenty twenty-five, between ten-thirty AM to two PM with a rain date of Tuesday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Request includes use of restrooms, completed park permit, and proof of insurance have been received.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to grant permission to Christ Church to use the baseball field at Stanley Deming Park for a kickball game on Wednesday, June eleventh, twenty twenty-five, from five PM to eight PM, completed park permit, proof of insurance and security deposit have been received.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And trustee Calora?
We have to table this one.
I don't know if we have to table this. We, I think that we can move forward with that.
I'm sorry, I'm on a different page. Motion to close Village Hall on Thursday, June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, and observance of the federal holiday, Juneteenth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the budget modification requests for certain fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget account lines as per the Village Treasures Memo dated May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution adopting negative declaration under S- SECRA. Whereas the Village Board of the Village of Warwick has before it a draft local law entitled, a local law to amend Village Code Chapter One Forty-five entitled zoning to change the zoning designation of certain real property located forty-two Orchard Street from residential to light industrial. And whereas, this is an action subject to seeker. And whereas the Village Board as lead agency in an uncoordinated review has prepared and approved an environmental assessment form, EAF, and has caused to be prepared in EAF Part Two and Part Three. And whereas, following due notice, the Village Board has conducted a public hearing on the said proposed local law and heard all persons interested in the subject matter thereof. Now therefore be it resolved as follows. The Village Board adopts Part Two and Part Three of the EAF and authorizes the mayor to sign the same. And two, that after considering all the information presented to it, including the EAF, the Village Board adopts the negative declaration attached to here too.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a question.
Okay.
If, um, if the board votes yes to adopt this, does it then follow that they must vote yes on the zoning?
Well, this is just for, uh, the, the seeker.
I understand.
Yeah. But I think maybe you're referring also to the, the next one of actually permitting the zone change.
Correct.
Does that have to follow through with, yeah, so where does it go after, after the zone change? So they already got barriers.
Accepting, so accepting the seeker, does, by accepting the seeker, does it then follow? Is it a failure of logic if someone votes differently between the two?
Depends on what your perspective of logic is.
The answer is no, it is not. Um, it often is the, often, sometimes it's the case that a proposed change in zoning wouldn't have any adverse environmental impacts. But zoning is discretionary with the board. As long as there's a rational basis for it, you can say yes or no as you see fit. A residential lot, if you decide, well, yeah, there's no impacts from making it light industrial, but I still think it should all be one residential lot, you're free to vote no on the zoning change. So, yeah, there's, there's no problem with adopting negative declaration. I don't want to get into it, but the planning board already adopted a negative declaration on SECRA under this. You'd be hard pressed to say, we're going to require an EIS on this, so, I mean, but it doesn't completely tie your hands as far as the next resolution is.
Very good. That's good. So we have a second. Is this a roll call?
Trustee Cheney?
Yes.
Trustee Foster?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight?
Yes.
Trustee Calora?
Yes.
Mayor Newhart?
Yes.
Resolution adopting a local law granting a petition for zoning change. Whereas the Village Board has before it proposed local law entitled, the local law to amend Town Code, Village Code, Village Code, Chapter One Forty-five, entitled zoning to change from the zoning designation of certain real property located forty-two Orchard Street from residential to light industrial. And whereas a negative declaration under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act has been adopted in regard to the proposed local law. And whereas all referrals required by law have been made upon the proposed local law. And whereas, following due notice, the Village Board held a public hearing on the proposed local law. Now therefore be it resolved as follows. One, that the Village Board hereby adopts the local law. And two, that the local law shall be effective immediately and shall be filed in the office of the Secretary of State in Albany as required by applicable law.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, discussion on that. So, I know we're referring to the local law that in itself refers to the concept of Lot Two and has the boundary descriptions. Sometimes when, when searching back through records for people to have a, a fuller understanding of what actually happened, the meeting minutes can act as that system of record. So it, it would be, I think it would be more clear to reference that it is not the full lot. And I know we've kind of come to that understanding, that it is, is a portion of that that's to be designated as Lot Two. But maybe we just refer to what those, uh, geographic boundaries are that limit it there. Because if it reads that it's the full lot and it's, and you look and you, and you interpret that as smack dab in the middle of residential, it's, that doesn't, um, that's not accurate to what it actually would otherwise be.
So what are you, what are you?
So I'm, so what am I, what am I suggesting?
Yeah.
Um, some wording tweak here that would just make that clear in the resolution as someone would read back on this.
Like a portion?
Like a portion of?
Mm-hmm, that it's not the full lot.
Could you reference the map? Like, the Zone Two, a portion of the lot per the rep, per the included referenced map?
Well, the, so the map itself, I think, just showed the whole, the whole lot.
It doesn't, it breaks it into Zone One and Zone Two, and then it says new lot lot, new property line, removed property line.
Yeah, that's like, that's like contemplating that it's, it is going to be sold.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Uh.
It, it provides a comparison too, because it says, like, the new.
Yeah. Steve's writing furiously over here.
Well, you're kind of spraying this on me. How's this sound? So, and after all the whereas's and before the now therefore be it resolved, add another whereas clause saying, whereas, "The proposed zoning change shall apply only to the portion of the subject property designated as Lot Two on the subdivision plat and identified as a portion of the lot on the proposed local law." Something like that.
Perfect.
Okay.
Hardly perfect, but get the job done.
It's perfect to me, Steve.
So.
So that, that, I just think that needs to be very clear in the resolution.
Yeah, and they, then you don't have to refer to something else, it's right there, it's all there, I agree.
But, uh, uh, otherwise, my, my comments are, um, it keeps Orchard Street all residential and intact.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it is formalizing what's already been in place for a long time, how to just drive around. There is, looking at the lot, that's subdivided lot, there's absolutely no room for anyone to build there, should anyone in the future want to attempt that. There's, there's, it would never pass any setback or, incident of floodplain, so I, I really do see that as just being.
Yeah, but if they not, if they changed, if they knocked down that property, right, like?
So.
And also, I also question whether they couldn't just pull the cars, whether there might be enough space.
Well, they're putting a fence up. They're required to put a fence up along the property line at the back of this man's property.
There, I believe there is like a little wooden fence now.
I don't recall.
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean they can't knock the fence down.
Well, what I meant is if that property remained in the possession, not at the possession of this man or whatever, but if that property remained residential, whether there might actually be room for them to pull around the back?
No.
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 I mean, that's why they've been leasing it for so many years.
Yeah, if you, you would never know that, that piece of property was attached at some point, because it's so integrated into the pathways of the car lot.
But going back to the resolution to make those changes, do we have, do we need?
Motion to adopt as amended.
Okay, so, have a motion to adopt this as amended?
Second.
So moved, yeah.
Okay.
Is that a roll call then?
Yeah. Look, you could have broken into two motions, now motion amend, and then voted on the amended, but just do it as one.
Yes, thank you.
Nope, no, okay, trustee Cheney?
Yes.
Trustee Foster?
Abstain.
Trustee McKnight?
Yes.
Trustee Calora?
Yes.
Mayor Newhart?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution adopting Village of Warwick Local Law number?
Oh, sorry, we don't have a number. I don't know what, I'm not sure what number it is.
Resolution adopting Village Warwick Local Law of twenty-twenty-five. Whereas the Village Board has before it entitled a local law amending Village Warwick Village Code Chapter Sixty-nine Flood Damage Prevention to repeal and reenact Subject Four, Subsection Four dot one entitled Designation of the Local Administrator. And whereas, following due notice, the Village Board held a public hearing on the proposed local law. And whereas, proposed local law is a Type Two action under Secr. And whereas, the Village Board has made all necessary referrals, now therefore be it resolved as follows, that the Village Board does hereby adopt the proposed local law, that the said local law shall take effect upon filing of the same in the offiary, in the office of the Secretary of State in Albany.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, and again, a roll call?
Trustee Cheney?
Yes.
Trustee Foster?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight?
Yes.
Trustee Calora?
Yes.
Mayor Newhart?
Yes.
Resolution amending scheduled fees to the Building Department. Whereas Village of Warwick Code Sixth, Section Sixty-four dash one provides that a comprehensive schedule of fees, including the Building Department fees, be approved by the Village Board. And whereas, in order to amend the village's schedule fees to change the Building Department's fees, it is necessary for Village Board to adopt a resolution. And now therefore be it resolved, that the villagers', villagers' schedule fees is hereby amended as follows. In the schedule fees under the heading Building Department, the following fee shall be added. Category Building Department, type of fee, floodplain permit, amount five hundred dollars, code Section Sixty-nine, four dot two dash two.
Floodplain permit application fee.
So, what did I say?
Oh, you know what it broke up into the second page.
Floodplain permit application fee, thank you. And secondly, the category is Building Department, application fee, or sorry, app, type of fee, is floodplain escrow deposit, amount of one thousand dollars, and code Section Sixty-nine, four dot two dash two.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, trustee Cheney?
Yes.
Trustee Foster?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight?
Yes.
Trustee Calora?
Yes.
Mayor Newhart?
Yes.
Boy, you really got the prize tonight.
Resolution, I need your chalice cup there for me.
Yeah, you do. It's empty then.
Resolution making a negative declaration under Secr on a local law repealing and reenacting Zone, zoning code Section One Forty-five dash one fifty-two L. Whereas the Village Board of the Village of Warwick has before it proposed local law repealing and reenacting zoning code Section One Forty-five dash one fifty-two L. And whereas, the proposed local law is an action subject to Secr. And whereas, the Village Board as lead agency has caused to be prepared an environmental assessment form, EAF, including Parts One, Two, and Three. And whereas, following due notice, the Village Board has conducted a public hearing on the proposed local law and heard all persons interested in the subject matter thereof. And whereas, the Village Board, as assisted by its consultants, has considered the potential environmental impacts of the proposed action. Now therefore be it resolved as follows, that the Village Board accepts and approves the said EAF Parts One, Two, and Three, and the mayor is hereby authorized to sign the same. And two, that after considering all the information presented to it, including the EAF, the Village Board adopts a negative declaration attached to here too.
Great.
Second.
Okay, and a roll.
Trustee Cheney?
Yes.
Trustee Foster?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight?
Yes.
Trustee Calora?
Yes.
Mayor Newhart?
Yes.
Resolution adopting Village Warwick Local Law of twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you.
Whereas the Village Board has before entitled local law amending Village Warwick Code Chapter One Forty-five Zoning to repeal and reenact Subsection One Forty, One Forty-five dash one five two L regarding the duration of approvals issued by the Village Zoning Board of Appeals. And whereas, following due notice, the Village Board held a public hearing on the proposed local law. And whereas, the village has completed a Secr review and made all necessary referrals. Now therefore be it resolves, resolved as follows, that the Village Board does hereby adopt the proposed local law, and two, that the village, that the said local law shall take effect upon filing of the same in the office of the Secretary of State in Albany.
Okay.
Second.
Trustee, trustee Cheney?
Yes.
Trustee Foster?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight?
Yes.
Trustee Calora?
Yes.
Mayor Newhart?
Yes.
Okay, and are there addendums?
Yes.
That's me again. Resolution amending scheduled fees to amend certain water fees. Whereas the Village of Warwick Code Section Sixty-four dash one provides that a comprehensive schedule of fees, including water system operations, be approved by the Village Board. And whereas, in order to amend the village's schedule fees to change Building Department fees, it is necessary for the Village Board to adopt the resolution. And now therefore be it resolved, that the village's se- schedule fees is hereby amended as follows. In the schedule fees under heading Building Department, the following fee shall be deleted. Category Water, subcategory Rents for Standby Water Pressure for Sprinkler Systems Per Year. Type of fee Service Pipe, less than eight inches in diameter, amount eighty dollars, code Section One Forty-one dash thirty-five. And category Water, subcategory Rents for Standby Water Pressure for Sprinkler Systems Per Year. Type of fee Service Pipe, eight inches in diameter and over, amount one hundred dollars, code Section One Forty-one dash thirty-five. In the schedule fees under the heading Water, the following fee shall be added. Category Water, subcategory Fire Sprinkler Systems. Type of fee Rents for Standby Water Pressure for Fire Sprinklers Systems Per Quarter. Amount twenty-five dollars, code Section One Forty-one dash thirty-five.
Second.
Trustee Cheney?
Yes.
Trustee Foster?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight?
Yes.
Trustee Calora?
Yes.
Mayor Newhart?
Yes.
Onward to reports, trustee Cheney, you?
Just to reiterate again what was discussed when Chief Raider was here. Um, the town of Warwick's going to be replacing the culvert under Ball Road near the intersection of Brady Road South Street Extension. It's going to involve closure of the road for approximately, uh, seven, four to seven weeks, um, which could begin, uh, sometime around the end of May. This means that there will be detours of traffic, uh, that used Ball Road to proceed east onto Seventeen A. And also, the residents of Ridgefield will need to go to Seventeen A and then circle back to get into the heart of the village. So, just, uh, be aware of social media. I know that the town expects that they will be posting that information, and, uh, once the village is notified, we would do also.
Great, thank you. Calora?
Yep, um, so, uh, quick mobility update. We are accepting proposals to support the Safe Streets for All project, and those proposals, the, we're accepting those proposals for a transportation planning firm through Friday, so that will close, and then we'll be evaluating those, and, and we'll be selecting the firm. I have quite an update, um, on the park front, park improvements front. Um, first, starting with the Patriots Path, we have selected a landscape architect for that. Um, and so we're in the process, we're about to be moving forward, and we had voted, um, during the last meeting to accept that, actually. Um, people are likely seeing a lot of activity on the skate park area or near the library. There are two different things that are going to be happening there. There's both the skate park and the, um, pump track, the pump track, uh, by the Warwick's, Warwick Lions Club. Um, they're still seeking volunteer support for that, and, um, the construction on that portion of that area will begin June first, and it'll take place during the course of that week. And then the skate park, um, that's where you're seeing the most construction, uh, the, um, and that site work was completed by Ground Control Excavating, uh, Mark Patempa, and that work was completed, uh, free of charge, in-kind services, and that saved, um, they spent about five weeks working out there, and that saved, uh, about a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars worth of work. So that is an incredible, uh, donation of service to our community, yes. And, um, there have also been significant other donations, uh, to the Skate Park Initiative that are facilitating the creation of this, this really valuable infrastructure for our community. Um, Jones Chemical, for example, um, there's going to be a shade structure. There's some really solid drainage out there, which was really important. And, um, also, uh, Bill, I met Bill out there this weekend and, and walked the site and, uh, talked about the material that had been brought in, and that material had been tested for safety, um, because the, the dirt was just way too, uh, porous and springy, so they had to kind of bring in, um, some, uh, concrete composite. And then, so, huge thanks to, um, the DPW in particular, Jason, and obviously Mike Moser, um, Dave Getz, and obviously, um, Ground Control, and the town has also been big support, so. And anybody else you feel like was missed there?
Uh, no, I think you covered, but.
Kazuga Foundation, obviously.
Kazuga Foundation, of course, but, uh, but also the, uh, Skate Park Initiative. It's a, a group of, you know, of men and women who are truly, um, they're just driven to get this project under, uh, you know, done. Um, but it's amazing the generosity that has been happening over the past few weeks. It's been, it, it's, um, I know that also, um, uh, Joan of Mandelbaum is going to be helping with some of the material issues and concrete and rebar, you know, things of that nature. I mean, there's a lot of talent in our valley, and they're tapping it, so it's, it's great.
Yeah, that's super incredible. And then also, um, this summer, there will be three kayak launches going in, so I just kind of wanted to highlight that for folks, uh, on top of all of this other activity. Um, people will be able to kayak from Drownlands all the way to Veterans Memorial Park. There'll be a stop downtown, and then also at the pump station afterwards. And so, um, big thanks to, uh, Justin and Walter from sort of the, the kayaking crew that have been working with the village to, and the DPW to design that.
Yeah, that's great. Phew.
Yeah.
Mary?
Yes, I have, uh, everybody has a copy of the proof of the summer news letter. Um, it's four pages, it'll, I'd like to send it out to print next Tuesday. So if anyone, everyone would just look it over. I'm gonna do the pictures in color this time, I've been doing, which is no extra cost. Um, only because the picture of the DPW is highlighting all their safety equipment, which is orange, which you can't really see, but it's a black and white, and the beautiful mural as well. So that'll be a little different, but no added cost. Um, I also sent to print last week this thing that we developed with the Architectural Historic Review Board. Um, Matthew Lapinto helped me curate a list for, um, an architectural, historical architectural walking map. It includes about thirty properties, um, summer residential, summer commercial, summer churches, Village Hall, and, um, the Tourism Center are both on it. It gives a little bit of history, it talks about the style of architecture and the little historic tidbits. Um, so that should be out by the end of the month, look for that. Copies will be available here, um, and next door at the Tourism Center, Seventy-five Main Street.
I know you've got this pretty tight, but is there any way you can just add what, some of what Carly just told the public? I mean, even if it's just the?
Yeah, we were talking about that earlier, actually, you mentioned some of it in your update.
Yeah.
And I was thinking maybe you could add a, just a little bit more in your update.
Okay, sure, yeah.
Like on the kayak?
Yeah.
Would that be okay, like just a few?
I can just add it in, yeah.
So the, the other thing is maybe something on the lead service line? Inter, because if people are gonna, if the.
That's also on his update in here, too.
I missed it then.
Yeah.
Yeah, I tried to get a lot in there.
The lead service line, yeah.
Okay, that'd be great.
It's dense.
When it says public engagement events, it's mentioning Summer Rec twenty-twenty-four?
Well, this is a year in review.
In review.
So it's the end?
That's confusing.
End of our fiscal year, beginning of our fiscal year.
Ah, I see.
So like, summer marks like the new year in the village.
Yeah.
So I think last summer newsletter, we did like, uh, an update on all the monies received.
Oh, okay.
So Carly, you want me to include the kayak launch?
Yeah, I think, because you've got in here.
The pump, is the pump track?
The well, well number three, yeah, the pump track's not in here, and the kayak launch isn't in here. But you've got the Patriots Path.
All right, so I can plug this in?
It's the, oh, and the skate park's not mentioned in here.
Yeah, I didn't.
Whoa, don't tell Bill.
No, really, it's coming.
Well, and what we were saying is if there isn't enough room, then, you know, in the fall, because all this stuff will be in, you know, so they'll be like, whoa, like, look at all of these things.
No, I'll have enough, I'll have enough room to, um, list those three things under, um, yeah. It's going under Community Development and Recognition with the Dog Park, Veterans Memorial Park. It does say Progress on the new skate park.
Oh, I was looking under Environmental Progress. Oh, yeah, so we just need to add the pump track and the kayak launch.
Okay, and I can definitely add, yeah, and then for fall, we can have photos, photos of stuff.
What if we have like an updated map or something of like all the cool things in the village, yeah? Because then, there might even be.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Oh, and I just wanted to say, um, we had a successful rec program sign up this past Saturday. After a few years of some technical issues and people waiting, um, long hours to sign up successfully, we had no complaints. I and myself signed two kids up in about seven minutes. Um, so thank you to everyone that got that together. Be glad Sharon Uster, our new company that we've been working with, he's been really helpful. And, um, everyone in the rec department.
And that was a huge thanks to you because you discovered them.
Because I ask questions.
You're a spy in Monroe.
I am, yeah.
Four, four hundred twenty-nine, four hundred twenty-seven people sign up.
Okay.
And the total fees were twenty-six thousand, five hundred sixty-eight dollars and ninety-three cents so far.
Yeah, my neighborhood chat was going wild with people just like, oh, it's so fast. I'm already done. This was great, yeah.
See, you make it miserable for a couple of years.
That's the secret to experience, right?
Oh, my God. Um, are there any spots left open specifically in the park program?
I think so. I can't see it right now, but.
One request I did hear was for the, um, the sports programs to also potentially be like weekly for when people are traveling and things like that. So just something for us to think about for next year.
Tom?
Um, let's see.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it's all, it's all good. Word got out. Because I don't think we have a board meeting before, but the, the Too Good To Toss event is happening. Um, so May thirty-first is the Saturday where you, and you come between ten AM to four PM and you drop off, you donate the items to, it's being at the basketball court at Stanley Demme Park. And then the next day, that Sunday, June first, ten AM to four PM, is the free shopping day. That, you know, this is under the, the auspices of Wickham Works now. And they, they've just done a great job every year. And we've diverted many dumpsters over the years from going to landfill, which is a great thing. And there's some rules about what you can drop off and what they'll take. So if anyone is interested, look at the, the village website. You could also find it on Wickham Works. I think that was, I think that was it.
It's wild how much is going on this summer. It's a lot.
It's a lot. So I just want to mention, um, next Monday, a week from today, will be Memorial Day. And we will be having a parade. The parade is organized by the American Legion. And it's a wonderful parade. It starts on High Street and goes down Main Street up Oakland Avenue to Warwick Cemetery, uh, where there's, um, some remarks and, um, and a general ceremony. And then from there, it continues down Galloway to Saint Stephen's Catholic Cemetery, where again, there's a ceremony and, and comments and prayers. And then it goes down Forester to the Fireman's Veterans Memorial and our Veterans Memorial Park monument. And that is where it ends up. And, uh, but it's, it's a wonderful event and it's a really important event for us as a community. And so I invite everyone to come out and to really support our veterans, especially now. The other thing I wanted to say was, uh, thank you to all the volunteers and the Warwick Valley gardeners who, um, helped plant the flower pots, the planters that we put out, uh, in the business district. They had about fifteen volunteers planting many, many plants, hundreds of plants. There were sixty plant, planters. And we actually were able to do it in an hour. So that was pretty, pretty amazing. And, uh, but thank you to them and thank you to the growers. We have some great growers in our valley. We, we used Corwin's as one of our growers, Emmerich's, and also, um, uh, GF Greenhouses, which is in Sugarloaf. So, um, they're just really great work. And, and also a shout out to Ginny Emmerich from Emmerich's Greenhouses who helped, uh, design the actual format of the pots and, you know, what plants were going to go. So it's a lot of work, many hands, some dirty hands, but it all got done. So thank you. And that's all I have, but I do have one thing. I know we're, we're going into executive session. Uh, but I just want to mention tonight is, Steve, you're last night with us.
Well, last night here.
Well, last night here.
Last night on TV.
Last night on TV. And, uh, and we would, we really wanted to say thank you for your guidance, your support, your, you know, help in every which way. I mean, it, it's, it's been wonderful. I not only consider you legal counsel, I consider you a friend. I think we all do. And, um, you kept our, our nose pretty clean, which is, even with Tom wanting to break laws.
Now, I don't know about that.
Well, bend them.
Warwick is a very special place. It's been an absolute honor to represent the Village of Warwick. And, um, I, I can't tell you how grateful I am for having this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much.
Some of my fondest memories.
Even though you, you call us town all the time.
Town again. You saw how many edits I had to do when I was reading one of my resolutions.
But anyway, this is a card from us with a gift and we just wanted to say thank you. It's, it's been, oops, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
Great. Okay, so any more comments?
No.
Um, have a motion, uh, we have to go into executive session. Mary, do you want to?
Contracts and personnel, right? Well, seeking advice of?
Yeah, we could go there.
Oh, okay. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to seek the confidential advice of counsel.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No motions?
No, uh, when we return, there are no motions that will be made. This evening, we'll close our meeting right after this.
Mary, may I have that recorded?
Oh, sure. There you go.
You sent us an email?
Yeah, a couple of them.
A couple, okay.
But one tonight, yeah, just, it's got the map.